Just say that.
All right, good evening, everyone. It's time to call our first meeting of two thousand and twenty five to order. I'm glad to see everyone here. We have an addition to our board roster. Uh, Dr. David Sneed has been appointed. Dr. Stevens need also. Turn the table to him around this way, right? Uh, has been appointed by the city of Farmington, and we are very glad to have him here. Um, I think before we get started, uh, if you wouldn't mind, if you'd like to give us a few words of introduction um to the board and to those who might be watching.
So you weren't far off. Dr. David Sneed is my uncle.
I do, yeah.
Uh, but I am very excited to be here. Uh, Dr. Stevens need I. The the day job is as supervisor of curriculum assessment at Oakland Schools, the county uh intermediate school district. So in that capacity, uh, my team provides support to teachers, parent professionals, principals, assistant superintendents, superintendents, and curriculum directors. Uh, across virtually all areas of the continent, math, science, reading, social studies. My own personal work is at research evaluation and assessment. I come to Oakland Schools, however, as a straight up old school, high school, English teacher. And so I have this lifelong love of literacy. And in my teaching career and my career at Oakland Schools, uh, I've dedicated that to creating rich experiences for. Um, and I bring that interest here to this esteemed august body. Uh, and I appreciate the opportunity to really learn from you all and from everyone and also contribute in ways. Uh, to make uh our community strong through the best world-class library system that exists on the planet. And so I'm very excited to to be here, uh, learn and contribute and and reaffirm my learning of Robert's Rules of War.
That's something that I think we all do collectively, right? Uh, we all learn together, and I thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Uh. As I say, the the city of Farmington always sends us great candidates, right? Um, but the skill sets that you reference, I think, are of critical importance right now. As we seek to make sure that all the things we do really tie back to the community and the families uh in the community that are looking for great outcomes for their students. Uh, and through all the lifelong learners that they that they are dealing with in their families. So thank you for being here, and I know your input is going to help us be that world-class institution that we strive to be. Thank you so much. Um, with that, I will turn to the agenda and um I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as printed.
Oh, I move to approve the agenda, but adding the item of swearing in our new board member.
All right. All right, it's been moved by Jim and probably seconded by Kathy that we would approve the agenda with an addition, being the swearing in of our new board member. All those in favor, uh, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? And the motion carries, and it looks like Crystal's coming to the room, so she is the person um who will conduct the swearing in for you. So Crystal, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Steven C.
Hi, Steven C.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
And then I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state.
I will faithfully discharge that of the office.
Or faithfully discharges the duties of the office.
Of the Farmington Community Library Board of Trustees.
Of the Farmington Community Library Board of Trustees.
According to the best of mine.
According to the very best of mine.
Welcome.
All right. Welcome again, uh, Dr. Stevens.
You guys are saying David, and I want to say Thomas. Is there a Thomas Smith somewhere?
There's a Sam C. Yeah.
He's my principal, I can't.
All right, that will bring us to the minutes. Um, hopefully, all of you see the copy of the minutes from our December meeting. Uh, Crystal distributed those earlier in the week. Um, I will entertain a motion for approval of the December minutes.
I move that we approve the December minutes.
Yeah, I'm seconded by Delara that we approve the December minutes. Any discussion? I see none. All of those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. That will bring us to the treasurer's report. Kathy, I'll turn it over to you.
I move that the board approve. The December two thousand twenty. Two thousand twenty four operating bills totally. Actually, I think that should be known, but that's what they're taking. Oh, they are. They're all. Okay, yeah, December two thousand twenty four operating bills totally means three hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars in five.
If there are seconds.
Support.
All right, it's been moved by Kathy and supported uh by Chris that we would approve operating bills for December in the amount of three hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars and five cents. Any discussion?
But the discussion would be at the beginning.
Looking forward to that.
But it should be the first. And these are the bills that, like, I think. These are the ones that, um. Here's. Inflation's low case in place. Kelly goes first and checks over the. I I did second when I checked over the invoices too, but I also write down everything that it's full. So at these board meetings, if someone asks me, oh, well, what is, what's that, what mechanic, or I can tell them, yes, what do you do? And then I, once I, okay, then it goes to earning. It gets paid.
Yeah.
When he says, if you have any questions, that's what he's talking about.
Yeah, and just for awareness of the public um present and any of those who may be watching.
It was a book.
What Kathy just um walked through is the fact that um we pretty much have a triple kit approval process, right? Um, Ashley on staff is responsible for those entries. Kelly is approving from staff management perspective. Kathy is approving at the treasurer, and then ultimately, um, I will approve before payments are issued or checked. But so there are one, two, three, uh, four of us approving uh before any expenditures are made, just for transparency. All right, any other discussion or questions? Yes, Chris.
This is just part of my ongoing learning, Kathy.
Yep.
So we wrote a check to ourselves. Farmington Community Library for six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
In that on the second page.
Yeah.
Well, see.
Okay.
And O two.
The vendor number is one zero 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 two.
Oh, okay, so that, um. We pay the bills for MetroNet, which is the consortium of how many libraries? Seven libraries.
Okay.
And uh then we get reimbursed for that. The there's the accounts receivable, we're getting reimbursed.
Okay, all right, so this is just a transfer from accounts receivable.
Okay, thanks.
The library is the Farmington Community Library is the treasurer, so to speak, speak of the MetroNet consortium. Oh, gotcha. Everything goes through us, and then we build each individual.
Okay, all right, that makes perfect sense.
Great question. One of those that. Yeah. You wouldn't know unless you.
I try to. I win every month that I want to learn what it means.
He has ten thousand dollars a year to do that, so.
Any other discussions on the bills? I didn't see none. All of those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? And motion carries.
I move to receive and file the December two thousand twenty four financial reports.
It's been moved by Kathy and seconded by Delara that we can receive and file the December financial reports. All those in favor, let it be known by saying, oh, sorry, yes, Chris.
So then just to confirm where I'm looking here at um accounts receivable, and it says MetroNet. That's the money that came in that were then. Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Kathy, do you have any other items from the finance committee?
Can we wait for the finance committee?
Oh, well, that's true.
No, I'm I'm done with the turkey.
All right, just for minutes purposes, who seconded that motion? All right, Kathy, well, thank you very much. Uh, and we appreciate your service as treasurer. I think that we look at our financials last year. We transferred around two million dollars into uh our fund for all of the. Well, it's estimated, uh, but for all of these projects that we've been doing or we've been planning to do. Uh, and so I think, you know, some of the moves that you've made over the last year and the board has made um to get us into some better products definitely helped. Us kind of build up that um cash so that we don't have to go back to the citizens for many of these things, so thank you. All right, that will bring us to the Friends of the Library Report. Stacy, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Ernest. Uh, well, the bad news is that the Oscar Short fundraiser event will not be happening. Uh, the confluence of bad events, um, the distributor chain. And so we can't get it without confirming at the same time if we can get the civic, because apparently. Um, Scott Freeman, who is in charge of the facilities for Civic, is retiring. So it's it's been a um. An unfortunate collision of things that weren't working out real well. So we will plan for next year, um, dependent on how uh the city of Farmington. This appointment for the functioning of the civic, fingers crossed. Um, and Kathy didn't think that we could, after finding out, get something together within a bottom of. I mean, it would it would be a lot of effort, um, in considering that most of the fundraising comes from um in-kind sources from area businesses. It's it's really too bad because it was such a great event, and then COVID just destroyed everything. Um, including revenue for the civic. So that's the bad news. The good news is we have a fall author event. I don't know how many of you know Kylie Reed. She published a book slightly pre-COVID called Such a Fun Age, that was a huge hit. And um so she's got another one that was published this year called Come and Get It, and she's going to be our author. She is teaching creative writing at U of M, and she and her husband and I think possibly a couple of kids are are living in in our, so. She's uh uh currently managing an author, and so we're super looking forward to her. If you have not read her work, I I. I highly suggest it. It's a great book. It's called Such a Fun Age, and as somebody who is a woman of color who is writing in a big space, she's big splashy name. Big splashy name, so fingers crossed that uh that we have great attendance.
Do we have a date?
No, not quite yet. Soon. It's going to be during National Friends Week, and it's probably going to be um a Monday night because it seems to to work for a lot of people. So, but that's awesome. Um, we sent out our December membership renewal, and uh we have um things that are trickling in. Uh, see what we get. I did move the board to consider a citywide postcard mailing, which is a lot less expensive than the traditional mailing that we've been doing. And I also said to them, I don't know if I told you all this at the the December meeting, that uh I had just read an AARP newsletter. About how when you send in a check or something where you write down your credit card number, and you can hold that up to the light, there's a lot of fraud that's committed to that. And electronic donations are a whole lot safer for everybody, right? So convincing um convincing our current donor crop to to do things can be a little bit, you know, tough. Because people do the same thing over and over. I am a feature of habit, you know, I I totally get it. Um, but we'll see how it goes. But this is going to be a postcard with a QR code and maybe a little note about what to do if you don't want to do the QR code. So we'll see. Um, one of the things that we noticed with, you know, with donors is that. Um, just like everybody, donors age, and so you continually have to make sure that you're hitting the groups that are are uh most affected by the library. So we're really trying to target um a younger demographic for some of the things that they might be vitally interested in. And this woman on my left hand has some amazing ideas, and the woman second to her has also some amazing ideas. So we're really looking at beefing up fundraising so that we can use those as a bonus for um. Use the and use those donations for the biggest splash that we can. So thank you to Kelly for suggesting that we change how we um. Fund some of the programming uh so that we can keep things in a band so that if something comes up like, you know, VR headsets that, you know, Google's putting out, that we can get those things. Maybe have a room where where people can can use those VR headsets and and have something that is exactly. Is very splashy, and you know, I'm still riding that high of seventy-two point two percent uh approval rating for the village, so. And the more I read about it in, because I, you know, I live in that world for my my work world as as well, the more I read about it, the more um. I think that we're doing extraordinarily well. So my goal as a Friends Board member is to keep up. The the hype, keep up the the vibe, if you will, and tenor of what we're doing so that when that next military comes up in eight years. That we um have the approval of of published because they feel that they're getting they want. So. Here I am, hype person. Were there any questions about anything?
No questions from me. Uh, we're getting asked for a better hype woman. Um, Stacy, I thank you so much. And um, as I mentioned, in December, you will be hearing from me about uh my campaign to help restore coffers at the Friends. I think Stacy's got her first donation from my campaign, maybe today. Uh, but we will talk about that a little bit, just so that we can kind of try to make some drive. Friends membership also. That's really important to drive uh that membership up. So thank you for everything you're doing, and um if we can support, let us know.
You do you do support every day and every day.
Thank you. To that, any more questions for Stacy? Okay. Seeing none, that will bring us to the director's report. So Kelly, I will turn it over to you.
I do just want to give thanks to Stacy. She spends a lot of time here. I don't know how, I feel like she spends more time. Here than she does at work many times. I don't know, but she's always here. Either ripping covers off of books because she wants to recycle them or sorting out whatever. I mean, she spends a lot of time, and we really appreciate everything you do.
My friend here.
If we don't say it.
So I I would just add that, you know, the staff might not actually know what you guys do on a monthly basis, and um. It might be helpful to. And hear that because some people don't know that seventy-two percent is a good thing. Some people might see it as maybe a bad thing, like, why isn't it eighty percent? Why isn't seventy-nine point one percent like uh Pleasant Ridge had, you know? Second highest in the state. And it far exceeded my expectations.
Right.
With a far greater number of voters than. That's important to call out, right? And I want to tell someone about that too, because this particular group, uh, when we were considering when to put the village on the ballot, that was a big question. Um, and I remember Jim explicitly expressing that. We wanted to have a really full-throated representative response to understand. The community's mandate for library services, which is why we decided to go on the busy ballot in November. We didn't want to be hiding the issue anywhere, or, you know, we really purposely put it out there during the busiest election purposely. Um, and so um I am just gratified that the community did respond as well as they did. Um, and there are a lot of issues on that ballot, and uh they definitely signaled strong report uh support for us. So thank you, Stacy. I think a lot of that credit goes to uh the Friends' work and the staff uh for delivering services uh that the community um. That meets the community's needs. So now I I think I'm back to you, Kelly.
Yeah, sorry.
I kind of hijacked.
Well, that's right. Um, we received a very nice, I think, you know, from Bosch Brands, uh, or from Bosch, Dear Farmington Community Library Team. Thank you for the incredible work you do in supporting our community through programs like the Seed Library, Udemy, online courses. Udemy online courses and Library of Things. Your dedication has made a lasting impact on countless individuals and families, and we deeply appreciate your commitment. Peter Cadros. So it's actually handwritten. I just I just have a hard time reading.
And we appreciate Bosch's ongoing report of all of those programs mentioned and others. Um, thank you.
And then we also received um a thank you from the Optimist Club. Um. Actually, it's Kelly Moore to Stacy. Uh, generous support. Thank you. We thank you for your support of the thirty-third annual. Ori Donley Golf Army for the Farmington Farmington Hills Optimist Club held on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth. Your generous support of a prize of a Friends of the Library membership. And several gently used books enabled the Optimist Club to raise almost twenty-three thousand dollars this year. So these funds may possible so many great programs for the youth in the Farmington Farmington Hills area. So. Um, okay, let me see here. I have a lot of stuff here. Like, no, fine. Oh, here we go. I had a lot. Yeah, okay. Um, so we will be, as I said, we will be undergoing an ADA compliance review. You would think after all the master planning studies and the spatialization study. We would have gone through the AD compliance store with it. That happens when you remodel, but this will look at our buildings in their current state, for example, and. It's a tour that they go around and like if you have one of those stools, which I trip over trip over all the time, when you round the corner from a stack, you know. Okay, maybe you shouldn't have this tool. So they look at it more as a practical basis, more than rather than remodeling your building type of thing. So we'll be going through this for both libraries. Um, there will be a cost to it. Um. Uh, but there will, so if someone comes out on Monday to take a tour of both the buildings, and then they'll send me a quote for it. Um, as I had written in here, we had three staff changes, three staff members left in December. Um, Marina Nelson received, Palangian, and Mark Flessa. Um, we posted. We posted for those positions. Um. Uh, the Perfection Student Art Display, that's the Farmington Public Schools, um, PTA that sponsors that, they're now on display down on the main level. As you go down the ramp, they're all around that ramp area, so you can go take a look. It's on display through February thirteenth. Uh, we received a uh summer reading sponsorship from T-Mobile in the amount of five thousand dollars, which is really nice. Um, it helps with our summer reading book giveaway where every uh. Teen and.
Children and.
Children and teens, yeah, a book when the when they sign up for the reading program and a book when they add the reading program, so that helps support that. Um, Sona, our graphic designer, she her book was uh. Uh, picked as one of the New York Public Library's Best Kids Books for twenty twenty-four. Um, she designed that book. It's titled Lost Words in an Armadian Story of Survival and Help, so she was the illustrator. So that's a great accomplishment for her, right? Um, the guest or the mileage reimbursement was increased to point seven zero. We have a uh program next week, and you know, every some, every holiday, Christmas season, whatever. Um, people get new devices, and they don't know how to use them, such as the Kindle or whatever, what they want to read on. And so uh we have our traditional library, how to use Libby and who bless them, that you know how to download books. Where is that going to be, Kelly? Um, I think it's, is it here? Do you know, Charles? Yeah, I think it's here.
Are you are you asking for a friend?
Yeah. Um, we are hosting our, we have, uh, we. With in partnership with the city of Farmington in Bradley Park, Maria always has a couple of skating events. Our first one is January seventeenth. This is a video themed uh skating event.
Video game.
Video game, yes. Um, of course, our MLK Junior Day events are coming up, uh, starting on Saturday, January eighteenth with the protest button. Um, presentation, and then the opportunity to make your own protest button with the little button maker that everybody loves. And um, and it ends on January twentieth in the evening with our um art reception for the student artwork, and Joel Fluent as our keynote speaker. Um, we had another library card design contest. It ended on December twelfth. We received seventy-seven submissions. Fifty-five are which in the five to twelve. They should be, um. Now it's soon, but these are the winners. There's so I'll pass it around. There's the the little fox is our own Candace Elliot. She's in uh Patron Services at Farmington. Um. But yeah, um.
Oh, crazy.
These are the winners.
And I don't get a new card because I'd have to remember. I see numbers.
You get a new number when you get a new card.
Your number memory. I don't know. Oh, my.
Get a new pretty card, you get a new number.
That's the problem, right?
Right.
Um, so I sent an email out uh at the beginning of December. It was very helpful that that Freedom to Read Act of, you know, would go through the thing. It did not. It never came out of the Senate. The Senate sent it to government operations. It never came out before the legislature ended, so that didn't go through. Um. We will be hosting a chamber event. Again, we've done this for the past three, four years, something like that. So we're our host. Um, I think it's starting at eight o'clock in the morning on Thursday, April third. And so members of the Chamber of Commerce, uh, they're invited in for us like breakfast and to network and stuff, and it's a chance to show off. Um, what we do, what our services are in our buildings, a great networking opportunity. Um.
Do you want trustees to come?
Oh, yes, absolutely. It starts at eight AM. It's very early in the morning.
Several of us have attended those before. I know Kathy, I've seen you there, or Jim, I might have seen you there, maybe. Um, but it is really good to see different uh folks from different elements of the business community. Um, they are always very surprised to learn about things we have. Uh, I'm always amazed at how surprised they are at the different offerings. So I'd say, yeah, if anybody is up at eight AM and you're out, please do come.
Maybe. And it's here?
Yes. And there's like bagels and coffee and stuff.
It's not a brunch. It's a brunch.
No. No. I mean, it's very quick. People come in and come out, you know, there's like a, it's a lot of mingling with the uh businesses that come. And then it's a little bit about them all introducing themselves, and each who is ever here gets to talk about what they do. And so it's it's a great uh to make connections. We made a few connections through um those networks for the library, so. Um, name badges, just so, and I will order you name badges and name cards. Um, and if you see your email is tucked in that notebook, is a, okay, perfect. Um, so if you, I'm just going to request this because we have a lot of new staff. We've turned over a lot, and they don't know who you guys are. And and so if you're going to go into a staff area, you have to have your name badge on. Um. Because they don't know who you are, and um. Unless you're being escorted by another staff member that they're familiar with. So just keep in mind, you should have your staff, your badge on. Because you have a key fob that gets you into staff areas, but if you're going to go in there, they should know who you are.
So that's what this.
That's what that is.
I can't imagine myself ever just bursting into a staff area.
Well, me either. Um, yeah, so. Jim's like, he knows, he knows me better. He knows that I, he knows how I am. Jim's like, he knows, he knows me better. He knows, he knows how I am.
Uh, okay, just one other thing. Uh, as we talk about tax captures and what we're going to, um, you know, what we're going to do, I just wanted you to know that this is set. This was in the water bill. Talks about um our skate program, they advertise our programs for us. So you wonder what you get from the DDA. This is in Waterville. Here's a postcard that the um DDA puts out that has our uh skate events on it with hosted by Farmington Community Library. Uh, what is this one from?
So they, the DDA is up for an award, like a national award on the other side.
Yeah.
It's a national award that they're like in the top, I don't know, was it five, seven? I don't know. It's a good number. So, you know, it's a well-respected DDA.
Right. And so then they also post our events on their DDA page, like the Pavilion Storytime at that. So that is free publicity and stuff that we do not have to create or pay for that we get for those tax captures. So it is a valuable, valuable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're talking about that. We moved to that topic.
Well, wait, hold it. Well, you don't, that's, you're not a farm. Oh, yeah. That's all, that's all Farmington.
I know. I'm going to send it back.
No, no, you said you don't get it.
No.
Oh.
Another voice.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, I, I was talking to.
She goes online.
I don't actually get a water bill.
Oh, okay.
I don't, but I see these materials all the time.
Yeah.
Promoting them.
Does anybody have any?
I just wanted to bring it in.
Okay. But other people might want to see them also.
I was going to talk about the tax capture.
Not, not right. Um, let's maybe bring that to, uh, I don't see old business on, uh, well. Unfinished business is next. So let's do that in just a minute. Uh, Sharon, let's see, are there any questions for Kelly on the report? Otherwise. Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Kelly. So we'll move to unfinished business. And Sharon, we'll turn the floor over to you to talk about the capture.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we need some input from, um, the trustees. So today and Kathy and I met to discuss, you know, the initial discussion on the tax capture. And we're working off a form that Ann, the lawyer provided um for the tax capture. We have the opportunity because we have um our village now, there's a new village in June. We have an option to fill in a paper that says we'd like to review our tax capture and you can use the same percentage, different percentages. Um, so we talked about the three different ones we have, the DDA, the Grand River and the Brownfields. And the big, the big item and the big one discussion is the DDA. Um, and it's about twenty-eight thousand is my. Let me see. Each year. Um, so.
It goes up there.
Yeah, so it comes up there. So one of the discussions was, since that's the largest one, is to look at it and certainly have the option to review it um every so often to see if you still want to contribute as much money. And because it grows considerably, Kathy had this chart that shows how large it gets every time the property taxes go up, it gets larger and larger. That we wanted the ability to review it like every two years for one. So you can build in a contract that after a two-year period, you can look and see if you still want to give them the same percentage and that they're getting at that time, increase it or decrease it. And we thought one year is not enough because pretty soon you're going to be buying, you're back with the paper. So two years gives you a chance to see what the DA is doing. If, you know, everybody grows adamant that it's an important element of the Farmington branch. Um, so we had thought about the two-year period and then we had thought about keeping it, keeping it at the level it's at like twenty-eight thousand. In other words, kind of keep us stable for a year or two, not give it a bit of an increase and keep it at that level if the trustees went with that. I know there's a big um push to let, let it be and let it ride up along with us. But I want a little more discussion on that. Um, and we're going to, Ernie, we need to be able to talk to Ann to help us with the language about, we want to change the amount, how to actually calculate the amount, how to figure out. The other thing is we'd like to add some language in that says that they're responsible somehow to us for the money. Like at least give us an annual report where they spent our little thirty thousand dollars. What did, do they do anything specific with it? Or they use it just to pay their utility bills? I mean, I think for thirty thousand dollars, they should give us an accounting or invite us to a meeting where they do the accounting. And you'd like to say to add a penalty in, but what penalty could you do? As long as you have a contract that you make renewable every two years, you say, well, the next year we just won't. So just decrease the amount then. I mean, to put a penalty in seems a little difficult. Yeah, but I think asking them to make an accounting, saying at the end of the year, here's what we did, what here's what our budget, here's what we do with your portion of it. We put the landscaping by the library to help you guys out or something like that. But um Ann could draft that very easily, a sentence in there about providing us some information. Um, and the other two are very small. So um as long as you're not required the first year to put a contract in, I don't want to be locked out. In other words, if you have to put a contract in for all three and even though it stays the same, you want to make sure you have your bases covered. So then two years, if you want to change your contracts, you have all three entities covered. Um, we have to pay um the bill for Ann. She is an attorney, so I don't like to waste the phone calls or waste any money. Um. If people know me, I'm very frugal. Uh, so with those, the big issue is because the DDA had a lot of uh pushback. Um, and we were thinking of trying to stabilize it, not let it grow every year. Um, the, the best that I thought we, that we would like to do is just to, you could leave it the same, but only for two years. Or you could reduce it just a little bit so it doesn't get the property tax increase. It'll get the same amount, but not an increase. So I need some, some conversation on that because we can meet again on the numbers and stuff.
Yes, Chris.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I start with this. I think going back to what Jim said, it, it, it's important in our conversations not to talk about the DDA being a benefit or not a benefit to the downtown branch. There are one library system. People who live in the city of Farmington use this uh library and people who live in Farmington Hills use the downtown library and they use the downtown. And the people who live in Farmington use the businesses and so forth in Farmington Hills. But I just, I don't want us to think about it that way at all. Um. In terms of asking how they used our thirty thousand dollars, I just have to say, we will cost them more in accounting than that thirty thousand dollars for them to do that. We either put our money into the general fund of the DDA or we decide in advance what project we want to support. But for them to try to track thirty thousand dollars through the hundreds of projects they do a year. Well, it just would cost them a fortune. Uh, um, and I don't think that we should even consider contributing more money to the um you know, auditing and accounting and uh and financial management uh infrastructure of the area. Um, so I don't think that that's a good idea at all. In term, my own opinion, in terms of just saying it's twenty-eight thousand this year, let's leave it at twenty-eight thousand for the next two years. Personally, I, I'd be okay with that and look at it again.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, just a question. Um, I wonder historically what information has, has this body got relative to the DDA in terms of, not even necessarily what they've done with what we've given, but have they provided any sort of?
Well, I, I saw my second year on the board and since I've been on the board, I haven't heard anything about DDA till this came up.
Well, I, I want to say this, uh, from my perspective, um, the DDA is I'm very comfortable with the DDA's program of work and what those activities represent because I can see those. And I do know, and I, I have the benefit of having been here a little bit longer too. Um. I'm definitely hearing Chris's concern about administrivia, right? If you're giving them thirty thousand dollars and if you got to track it. The DDA is kind of a collective situation, right? All of the property owners in that area are participating towards a program of work that everybody benefits from. So I'm kind of probably more in the camp of Chris on that. We're either in or out. I think we're in from my perspective. And, and I am interested in seeing how did you spend the money? I don't necessarily need to see how you spent our thirty thousand, but I would just want to see your overall program of work. And if we're in alignment with that program of work, then I would feel comfortable. I personally have bigger questions around Grand River uh corridor. That's a, that's an authority that captures money, but I don't necessarily see the fruit of that work. I think Kathy may have attended their meeting this year.
They did, and I'm sorry, I'm not prepared.
No worries. But, but we are trying to engage more there to understand what are they actually doing? Because from my perspective, I really don't know. But I don't know exactly what those funds are being used for at all. The DDA, I have a good sense of that because I can see the programming that the city of Farmington and the authorities put it out every month. Um, so, so I think I would ditto pretty much everything Chris said about this. Um, I think I would be comfortable with us moving forward with the current capture rate with a review in the two-year period you recommended, Sharon. I think, yeah, I think that makes sense. Um, and I also think it makes sense for you to consult with legal, you know, on the agreement for sure. Um, but those, those are my thoughts on it.
We also have to do that for the Grand River.
We used to do it for, we'll do it for all.
No, Brownfield, we don't have to. That's just a given.
We just, we do the both for the two of them, do exactly the same, two years, look at it again. Um, and should we keep the, the rate for the library the same then for the DDA?
I, I, I think for now, all right, unless.
This is still going to, it's going to be from twenty-eight to probably thirty. It's going to jump up a little.
Well, the, I think, yeah, we, I think, I think we should maintain a rate. I don't think we should cap it at a number.
Okay, you don't want to.
No, right. Uh, and that, and just remember, so when property taxes, they go up, that means our entire budget goes up. It's not changing the amount. And it's, it, it's not, in other words, it's not that we're having to give more to DDA next year than we are this year proportionally. You know, it, it, it's all, and I just think it's, it's an investment in the it, it's a, we look like a good neighbor. Uh, you know, we're, we're making an active investment in the community and I don't have a reason to question what they're doing right now. Like, like I'm with Ernie, I see it every day. I, I see what, you know, when you, right now, when you see the ice rink and you see many uh people out skating every day, that's a DDA project. And, and like Kelly said, it's, you know, they advertise for us when we help sponsor those events, like, like those kinds of things. I get to see them every day. But that's because I live there. I understand why, why people in Farmington Hills might say I don't see it all the time.
We don't want to share with you.
Well, go ahead. And it's downtown. And as we said, when we were in our December meeting, you know, really, um, I think you spoke to this, Chris, and I live in Farmington Hills, y'all know that. Uh, but as far as the community is concerned, I mean, let's be clear. Uh, our county executive was on television in downtown Farmington, talking about he was in Farmington Hills. Uh, the Farmington community is collectively regarded. And I think, I know I do consider that my downtown. Um, and this is kind of still the township to a lot of people too. And so, uh, so I, yeah, I, I, I am okay with the DDA. Grand River corridor though, I just, we can look at that corridor and see the decline. And um I think we need real serious plans there. And so I'm more concerned about.
I can send you the information.
Please do.
Yeah. And I just want to say that, you know, we get tax captured by all three of those things. And I think um what they had was information on the twenty-three, year twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three capture. And I believe that it was sixty-four thousand dollars that they captured.
And you're talking DDA?
All three.
All three combined. Okay, yeah.
Um, because um Grand River corridor is not just Farmington, it's Farmington Hills as well. So. And Farmington Hills captured, I think, thirty-one thousand and other Farmington didn't capture.
So, so I think this is really about us, uh, to your question, Stephen, like how much input have we received from these authorities over time about their activities? I think in DDA, um, we kind of know what those are and we're heavily engaged there. Grand River, not so much would be my estimation. And so I think doing what we're doing, setting up these agreements and the changes of law that provides for the agreements, gives us the ability to start to have some input, some real input into that. At the DDA, I think we've always had input because they see us as a partner. The Grand River Authority, I'm just not sure about exactly what's going on there, how robust of a program they have going there right now.
Just on a related note, like um the DDA, uh, related to our, our thoughts about our downtown branch. The DDA has got a, is sponsoring the city of Farmington's um mobility committee or whatever they call it. And so trying to improve walkability and bikeability and so forth, which would include access to the library. And one thing I think we can say is we would really like to see how you include access to the downtown branch of the library in these studies. We can minimally say that.
Right, sign.
I'm, I'm not on that committee bus. There, there's, there's a project that we got money for, but then it hasn't like worked out and Claire and I are working on it that yet. I know, because construction of Farmington Road and stuff, yeah. It is being worked on.
Yeah, I mean, it just gives us an, like, this is something we're very interested in, the work that you're doing. And we would like to, you know, advocate for the library property to be, you know, very specifically called out in the walkability study. Not like challenging them to doing it. It's a way we say, you know, this is one of the things we're interested in.
Well, is this something that I should put some language in the contract or is this something that we personally will get to know the people on these?
That's what I meant. And a, a way to show our mutual interest.
So we'll just like keep it straightforward with no conditions, like give us your statement and then we'll just personally, somebody will contact everybody once you're one of these agencies and ask them what they're doing.
I talked to the director of the DDA and she would be happy to come and talk to the board if you're interested. Yes.
I think that would be.
I'd be lovely.
It's a nice free thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Nate, who's the director?
Okay.
So we will put that hopefully maybe if her schedule works, we'll try her everywhere.
Well, what I'd like to do is I'd like to um tie this up and talk to Ann to see uh the right paragraphs to put in. And at the next trustee meeting, bring it up and give everybody a copy and just show this is what I'm going to give to the two organizations. And uh, that's, that's okay. We'll prove it and she can.
Can I offer two, two things? Number one, they need to know by March. Just telling you that's your timeline.
Yes. Yes, February, we're good.
Yep. And I'm just going to talk about the rate. If you're talking about capturing at the current rate it is, which is your millage rate that you capture, right? It rolls back every year, meaning it gets lower because of the headly amendment. So do you really want to lock it in at a higher rate when it's going to roll back? The only time it doesn't roll back is when inflation is above five percent. So it will roll down and be less this coming year.
And, and that's why I think, I think Jim was kind of saying this. I think the ratio matched the millage rate, right?
Yeah, but you're talking about holding it. That's what you were talking about.
Yeah, but the group didn't seem to like that.
Oh, okay. I thought that's what you just said.
I did, I did say that.
Oh, yeah, but that didn't seem to be that.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
Does that require a motion?
Well, once you brings the uh draft agreements back and we review them, then at that time we will.
And we'll, and we'll do that for February. So we have lots of time.
Yeah.
And it's okay if I talk to Ann and have her.
Yeah, I just wanted you to run that by Ernie first because it's set up that technically the attorney.
It's, it's almost done, actually.
Can I just add something to what Chris was saying about the pathways committee? They currently have a survey that is open to anybody, whether you're a Farmington resident or a visitor to Farmington, where they ask about putting walkways or crossing um paths uh all along Grand River. And at the very, I just took this survey a couple of days ago. And at the very end, there's a place for just open comments. And so Chris's point of prompting them and others to think about how they're driving traffic and being inclusive of the library um is an important thing. All of us can share our voice through in that survey. Um, in what we just passed around, what Kelly just passed around, what's um in the DDA, there was also mention of that survey. But I'm happy to email it to everybody as well.
There's our code right there that you can just do it right now.
And that, that would be great either way. If you fail it, that would be perfect. Go hard, just to remind everybody. Um, yeah, uh, can I, Sharon, I'm not trying to throw any wrinkle in what you, in what you're trying to do, but I do want to just re- say, repeat what Kelly said. That we have had a policy in the past where we're contacting attorneys and all that is done through the president. And uh Sharon, no disrespect to you at all. But in light of the reason for the policy, I'll take the question to the attorney and I'll bring the answer back.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Um, thank you, Jim. Um, all right. Yes, Chris.
And then uh just not for this event, but for future, like just um to check the authority of the president to delegate. And then, uh, just not for this event, but for future, like, just, um, to check the authority of the president to delegate. Um, conversations with an attorney in the future, if you ever wanted to do that. I, I'm not suggesting we handle that as a business matter right now. But that, that might be something that should be in, looking your power.
Well, yeah, and I think that it is. Uh, quite, quite frankly. This policy, um, comes from, you know, some legacy compositions of this.
I just wanna make sure you have the authority to delegate if you chose.
So, so I do believe that's in place.
Okay, good.
Um, and I think, I, I think at a future, you know, study session or retreat item, that's probably something good for this group to talk about, some of that. There are some. So, any other discussion around the authority, uh, the capture authority?
All your work, Sharon.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thanks a lot.
No problem.
You know, the thing about Sharon is, is I know she's the one person, and no disrespect to anybody else here, but I know that if I send Sharon something, she reads every word. I know that for a fact, right? And she will pull out all the things, uh, that, that we need to see and talk about. Thank you, Sharon. And we'll look forward to, um, we'll look forward to, um, the committee's, um, suggested agreement. Um, for review next month. All right.
You were going to call Ann.
Well, I'm gonna call Ann and then I'm pretty much just gonna send that feedback back through you. So, yeah, that's. So, so I'm just gonna make a call, but I'll, I'll send it back through you. I will not cut you out of the loop on this at all.
You're gonna have to email him, what, what exactly?
No, I'm just gonna, just, he's gonna fill it in while you're on the phone.
Well, you know what might happen, Sharon?
You don't wanna get charged for two phone calls.
Thing what will happen is there probably will be a three-way call, maybe.
There you go.
Yeah, I think that would be the best thing to do. All right, um, yes, it looks like, um, we wanna circle back, um, to Kelly's director's report for a moment.
I totally forgot about this little spreadsheet that I, yeah, I gave you. Uh, so the friends at the library had asked for like statistics about, you know, marketing and could they tell what programs are. You know, most popular and that kind of stuff. So Sarah puts together this, this spreadsheet, and this is our programming from. Uh, January of twenty twenty four through December of twenty twenty four. And so, um. This doesn't do the individual, like, did they come through Facebook, did they come through Instagram, did they come through the mobile app, did they come through the website, you know, whatever. Like, it's, it's a conglomeration of all of those things and how they got to the. Calendar event in our library calendar of events, right? And so, as you, uh. Um, she compiled the top one hundred events from the twenty twenty four calendar year based on the number of views. Each event page received on her event calendar. There is more, this is more accurate than just looking at the events that performed well on social media, because it can, because it can give a better idea. How many people are interested in an event by visiting our event calendar after clicking through on social media and email newsletters. Or after viewing it in our print materials. It doesn't encompass anything, everything, because there are events that we don't require registration for, so someone may only view them on our social media. Or in our flyers and not visit our website because they already viewed all the information and they need it on the external platform. It was also helped to, it's also helped a little, or you can, I can send this to you as a link, so you can sort the table however you want to be. So, uh. But what she does, many of the events had high page views, a good suggestion that patrons are interested in the title or the topic. But low conversion rate to attendees. The low conversion rate could suggest, and she was several of these. The event topic title grabbed their attention, but the description made them realize it wasn't what they wanted. These events still help us understand overall topics that patrons are interested in, even if that specific event didn't get high attendance. For example, managing your mental health had four hundred and eighty page views. It's the twentieth highest viewed event of the year, but only thirty three attendees, so a ten percent conversion rate. Mental health is probably a topic that people are interested in, but maybe the timing of the event or the format was not what they were wanting. Or all the parent workshops get a high page view, but low conversion rates. Parents probably find it more difficult to follow through on a commitment to an event if they have little ones. It's great that we record them, most of them, because then parents can benefit from, from them when they do have the time. The day or the event of the, the day or time of the event just wasn't right, you know, maybe it just wasn't right for people. Patrons are interested in the event, but the space is limited. Uh, for example, handmade adult crafting series consistently gets a lot of views, but it has limited space. I think only ten people can register, so, uh, so, um. And some of the teen events get a lot of interest, but they are also limited to thirty or less attendees. So, for instance, teens hosted a Pokemon party that three hundred and forty-four page views. But only thirty teens could event, could attend. So, and then this season, children's hosted a, um, a dog man party. Um. And they had like a ton of people, you know. Um, so it's something for us, this gives the programming staff something to look at about what the topics are. And why they have so many views, they're, they're, they only have, you know, like. Low conversion rate, is it because you're only allowing ten people in? So it's just a good exercise on, on reviewing our programming. So, is this just showing people that attended in the library, or is it showing?
Yes, I thought there were more people that saw the viola shipment.
Because we don't, maybe we're looking online.
Well.
You have one login, but you have.
Yeah, there could have been ten people with one login, to say, I'm saying.
Uh, any general thoughts for the events that had high conversion rate about what might have been common characteristics?
They tend to be, if I'm looking at this, um, she's saying that anything with a thirty-five percent conversion rate, it's a good. Is thirty-five percent more is a great sign that the topic and format is working. So, but the bigger one, these are like, the library extravaganza was this huge library, Y party. You know, and that's, these top ones are, um. Summer reading or kids programs. And so you get higher attendance because it's a family type of thing, right? So you've got two parents and five children, or, you know, whatever it is, you know. Whereas these other ones, um, you know, down the road like that, I don't know, there was a. Albert Kahn unintended wants consequences. You have, you know, thirty-five attendants, but that's one adult attendee for, you know.
I think they're very niche.
Yes, yes, exactly. Um, so, so we're gonna take a lot, uh, look at this as a group and see, you know, I just thought it was an interesting report.
I love it. I love the use of data and then just the reasons or mythopysizing why some things may have a high comparison rate. But don't.
Anyway, sorry, I didn't need to.
No, I, I appreciate you lagging this, um, because this is important, and I know the staff's doing a lot of work right now to understand. What is the community's real desire around programming? Understanding the current, um, landscape. Understanding of the whys, right? What are the whys behind why we get good, uh, conversion rates on some and not on others? And what are the common themes there, or the common types of programs to get high conversions or low conversions? All of that will help us and inform us on, on what we should be doing in the future. So hopefully, this is something that we'll kind of see on a regular basis. And probably even in a more refined, uh, way, if you guys massage this data, um, and understand it better. Thank you. All right. That will bring us to the facility, the, the subcommittees, uh, so finance first. Kathy, anything from the finance committee?
Yeah, um, well, it's about Michigan class. Um, Michigan class interest earned in December was forty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Well, the month then balance was eleven million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-three cents. And the daily yield on December first was four point seven five four two percent, and it was. Four point five eight two five percent on December forty-first. Um, meant to talk about this, um, study session, but. We do have the regular endowment fund, and right now that has four hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred eighty-six dollars. Just keeping that in mind as we go.
I ask you something just for minutes purposes, can, isn't everything you said also in the financial report? Usually it is, right? Everything you said about Michigan class is usually on the back page of the financial report. Okay, so I just didn't wanna, because I ran into this when I was doing the last month's minutes, and I didn't wanna. Repeat, I didn't wanna say nothing, no report from the finance committee, but I also didn't wanna repeat stuff that's already in the financial report. I didn't know what, what we wanted people to know. I know we talked about this.
Uh, say, reviewed, um. Statement balance, or something.
That's I think what I did say in the, yeah, for December. Okay.
If you prefer that I don't talk about it, that would be okay, or?
No, I think, I, I think for his purposes, uh, that will work. Anything else from the finance committee, Kathy?
That would be it.
All right, other than we need some new members, uh, Stephen, the finance committee, me and Kathy at the moment, I think something's gonna come out there. I might call you about that.
Anytime.
Uh, let's see, next, that'll bring us to facilities. Sharon, I'll turn it over to you.
Um, well, here's the topics that we discussed. Thank you, Jalen, for all the notes, um, that the new cleaning company started today. So look around, if you see that there is, uh, things that aren't changed, that aren't, aren't clean. Um, bring it to, uh, Peter's attention or one of the trustees, uh, we're, uh, hoping they'll be fine. They are the company that's right next door. So hopefully they, you know, will be a good company. Um, the outdoor sign, we discussed again, and Sarah is going to update the quote. And bring it to the board meeting. She didn't have it probably ready for January, what, in February, um, oh, you're going to remind her. Kelly, for the signed quote from Sarah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, uh, yes, she wasn't gonna get it, and she contacted them, but they didn't get it back for the board meeting, so probably back that way.
So, the, the concept was she's gonna get it, revisit the quote for the sign. And we talked a little bit more about the location that by the driveway, probably the most appropriate. Um, and would inquire, require probably a little bit of re-landscaping if the sign goes in. Um, so that's beyond the agenda for, for next meeting. Um, the rocks are, uh, on schedule for the spring. So that will also have a weed barrier, um, and it's a spring project, so Peter has them on his spring list. The landscaping, um, we talked a little bit about, um, uh, general landscaping and hiring someone to look over the overview that. The library where there's a tree that might be broken or should have been trimmed. So in a, in the spring, once again, it's not only the rocks, but to look around the property and see if there's some landscaping. And the company that's worked with us before, that could tidy up a few things, not re-landscape the place, but just to, so it looks neat and clean. And the tree's not half-broken and not monitored. Um, and Freed's, I guess, anyone know Fred's landscaping, they did a little work here before. So the idea was to try to contact them, because they're familiar with the, with the real estate. Um, Peter fixed the sliding glass doors, uh, which I guess were a problem. It was his report.
Um. He fixed those himself?
No.
Oh, okay.
Company came out.
And, uh, and as usual, there was gonna be an easy fix, where there wasn't an easy fix when it comes to sliding stuff. Um, and the rest of it, we talked about the master plan, which we pretty much covered here, and I can emphasize none. Is the feedback that we got from the staff, it said, they are a part of the plan. Um, and, um, I tried my best to make a motion to have the plan accepted. Uh, I, I wasn't make any progress because, you know, a lot of dissent. I have another try. It, it's something for the trustees to accept the plan designed by MCD. As a working long-term plan for our library. I'm just making another effort because you wanted to vote on something. So, it was just, uh, another way to say it.
Are you sneaking a motion right now?
It's a motion right now.
I second, yeah, yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
Oh, you know, it's just an idea. All the rest of mine got thrown out.
Hey, thank you, Sharon, I appreciate that, and, um, I'm sure that your committee will, uh, go a list into, um, agreement soon. Do whatever motion you wanna put on the table.
The motion, the motion was to, uh, accept, yeah, accept, to have the board accept the, uh, master plan as a long-term vision, and Kathy seconded it.
Prepared by MCD, you're ready.
All right, well, it sounds like we had a motion put on the floor there, uh, to accept the, uh, master plan document. Prepared by MCD as the working master plan document. Um, is that correct, Jim?
Yes.
Sharon, okay, so it's seconded by Kathy. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Sharon, uh, for all of the hard work. Thanks to the committee as well, the facilities committee, uh, reconstitute a facilities committee, right? Uh, but I think having them active during this time is critical, so thank you so much. Um, that'll bring us to the personnel committee, uh, so, uh, Dhohar, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Yes, thank you. The personnel committee, which is myself, Kathy and Renee. We met earlier this week to talk about a couple of things that feel timely. Because they need to be put into effect, uh, in early February. One being minimum wage, our state minimum wage increased. And you may recall, uh, several months ago, when we approved the budget for this year. Kelly, um, made sure that it included an increase of the minimum wage up to like thirteen oh three or something like that. Um, the actual minimum wage was, is now increased to twelve forty-eight. And so the first motion from our committee is to. Update the pay schedule to reflect the, um, new minimum wage of the state at twelve forty-eight.
Support.
Okay, I see, motion by Dhohar, support, um. Chris, okay, I wasn't sure what you mean. To increase minimum wage to, um, the expected twelve dollars and forty-eight cents an hour. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
How many employees do we have at minimum wage?
Well, I think we'll be switching thirteen people.
Oh, it's not too many. They're the book shelters.
Yeah, they're shelters, yeah.
The second item that we discussed was paid leave. And you have a document that has a lot of words on it that outlines our current policies and, uh, what we're advocating. To be, and Kelly, please help me out as I try to lay the situation that we're in. Basically, currently, we have limits on the amount of sick time employees can earn. Whether they are full-time, part-time, um, or.
That's what I would don't earn right now.
And what we don't have is a maximum that a staff person can take in a twelve-month period. Um, meaning how much they can, how much of those hours they can use. What the new law of the state, um, says is that actually you cannot put a limit on how much people earn. In a year for, towards their sick leave. And so what we are advocating for is to. Set a maximum of how much they can actually use and keep those maxes as, um, in accordance with the new state law.
Kelly, what did I?
So, yes, that's basically it. So basically. Full-time staff right now have five hundred and twenty hours of, they can earn up to five hundred and twenty hours of sick time. And then they stop earning until they use it, and then they go back up to five twenty, right? And so, um, you can no longer have a maximum, uh, they are, they can earn unlimited and they can carry over unlimited. So what we're trying to do is to put in place a maximum number they can use in one year. Which is basically the same as if you only had five hundred and twenty to begin with, you can only use five hundred and twenty in one year. So we're keeping full-time and part-time the same, do you see what I'm saying?
So the recommendation is to basically, uh, cap the user. So the recommendation is to basically, uh, cap the usage limit, they have the bank limit.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Well, not even the bank limit, because that bank limit is going to go higher.
Bank could be a thousand.
Yes, 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 yes.
So you'll see at the bottom of the document, it's, um, the section that starts by saying, uh, updates needed for policies. It lays out several policies that will be, that needs to be updated. So I'm hoping I can make the motion to policies rather than reading them all.
I do just want to, yeah, I just want you to know, Dohara, it's a little different from what we talked about because I contacted Mike Bloom and the stuff in red is his suggestions for the policy, just to tighten it up a little bit, as a lawyer would. Because to me, unused accrue and sick leave, it's just accrued sick leave, but, you know, he tightened up the words a little bit.
Thank you. I'm glad he did that. Um, and then the last bit of this is that shelters and library aides are
and substitutes.
and substitutes would not be eligible to be paid out for their unused sick time, um, as they resign or are terminated. So I'll give everyone a minute to.
Are the other people eligible to get paid out?
Full-time and part-time are eligible if they've been here for ten years, thirty percent.
The thirty percent of the hours in their bank.
Okay, I see. Chris got a question.
Uh, how, how was it decided on sixty-five days of sick leave in a twelve-month period?
That's their current benefit.
That's the five hundred and twenty hours.
Right, but it says the new law should state that, so, so the new thing that we're doing is limiting.
You know, maximum that they can take in a year.
Okay, so why did we decide on sixty-five?
Because that's what they, sorry.
That, no, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
That was the amount they were able to accrue, but now we're not, we're not able to cap what they can get.
I understand.
We're setting that, that's the number we're using now.
Okay.
The way I understood it, um, is that they capped it, they got it to like sixty-five days because after that is when short-term disability kicks in.
Thanks, that's a good answer.
That's what they're looking for, okay, yeah.
That's what, right, that's the answer.
Way back when, that's why.
Still in a short-term disability. So if somebody does have a major surgery.
Yes.
That's what I wanted.
Thank you.
Addition to that plan.
Yeah, right, okay, thank you, yeah.
Very good question.
I'm happy to make a motion and then we can.
Uh, I think that would be appropriate.
So motion to adopt the updated policies, um, in accordance with the new Michigan Paid Leave Act.
Okay, it's been moved by Dohara, seconded by Kathy, that we would make the updates prescribed here. Um, and related to the Michigan Paid Leave Act. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries.
And the last item we talked about, well, um, not tax your brain so much. We, in a past meeting of the board, we talked about our holiday closure calendar. Um, we, you all may have seen or noticed that we always have a patron that leaves a comment about uh, when we are closed for a holiday. And when we approved the twenty-twenty-five holiday closure calendar, there was some discussion of how often are we closed compared to other area libraries? And so we took a look at, oh, that list Kelly you shared had like ten, twelve other libraries on it. Happy to send, um, around a spreadsheet that I made just so we could compare across. And what we found is that we are very much on par with how, um, other libraries close. Some take, um, extra days, some have things like summer Sundays where they're closed every Sunday of July and August. Um, a couple of the days that we are open, that they tend to be closed are M L K day and Juneteenth. And we discussed at the personnel committee that those days, we actually had programming, quite a bit of programming on those days. Um, and so it makes sense that we stay open. So we didn't think that we needed to change or amend the closure schedule for twenty-twenty-six, but that's just the update of the discussion. And, well, I do have one more thing. We also briefly talked about board orientation and onboarding, what that process looked like, looks like and how the personnel committee can help, um, kind of put something kind of concrete. I know Sharon, you and I have talked about it in the past as kind of the newer members. And so Kelly's going to work, we kind of compiled the list, Kelly's going to work on it. And Stephen, we'd love.
You can be the subject.
We would love from everybody, but certainly from you as the newest, um, board member, is your feedback and things that can be adjusted, adjusted as you get onboarded to.
Thank you, Dohara. Uh, would you also include in your consideration around the board onboarding situation? I know we've talked in the past about, should we have a board portal? For like all of the documents, all of the stuff, where you could easily go and find all of the stuff that we distribute to all of us every month. And we kind of had some light discussion on it, but if you all would explore that and see if you think it is something that would be of great benefit to the body, I think it's something we would certainly entertain at this point.
Yeah, I would say there would be of a good benefit to this member of the body. I, I go home every month and try to figure out like which papers.
And maybe we should all pretend we're new board members and take.
Get outboard.
Yeah, and I think that's an okay suggestion as well. Um, because it's same, you know, I come up here every so often and I get a whole bunch of accordion folders and stuff from these guys and I take them home and I organize all of the paper that I have in those folders. That's great. Um, but it might be a little bit nicer and easier if I could just.
Because I don't really have a way to index it, right? I am not going to create my own index. That's the problem.
Oh, and my index is very general. It's like the month, everything.
So, yeah, I think that'd be great to discuss further. Thank you for bringing me up.
Yeah, I would encourage you if you, when you log into your, not if, when you log into your Farmlib, um, email, play around with that Microsoft Outlook applications, because one of the things that we have access to is a shared, like OneDrive is the, um, if you're familiar with like Google Drive, it's just a shared folder space and you can, and I, we've done this as the personnel committee to, and you've actually, we did this for Kelly's, uh, evaluation. You can share stuff, give access to people to edit or just view a document and that can be a space that use as our shared.
Yeah, that's true. Like, maybe just set up a little internal SharePoint.
Sure.
Yeah, and, um, as long as it's secure, uh, I think that could work for us. So, thank you.
Yeah, happy to talk about it.
Figure out what solution works best. All right, anything else from personnel?
No, that's all, that's all.
Um, don't you want to mention that we're going to meet with the director?
Oh, hey, I said I had three, but I guess I had five things to talk about. We are finally meeting with Kelly to discuss her evaluation from way back from twenty-twenty-four. Um, and we are meeting on the twenty-third of this month. Uh, and it'll be the personnel committee, Ernie, Kelly, uh, that will be attending. Let's talk about him out and what we can look forward to in the future.
I just asked, I don't know if this should be under trustee comment or personnel committee, but just because you started talking about the holidays and I know the staff knows much more about this than I do and, and, but it's come from them too. Not only do we get somebody asking questions about our holidays, but we also get requests every exam period. People want extra hours for exams. And I just wondered if the personnel committee and staff should, should look into that at all.
I appreciate you for raising that, Jim, because, uh, and so interesting, you know, when I first came on the board, that was one of the things I did too. Assessment of our hours and there was that question then. Um, and we found that we were pretty much kind of on par and, and probably a little bit more conservative than some of the other neighboring libraries. We're open more hours in general. But even with that, I think our constant feedback is, we want you to still be open even more hours, right? So to Jim's point, figuring out those high-impact times where we could maybe extend hours that would be meaningful to patrons is important. So exam time, I love that idea.
Especially once those new study rooms or whatever.
Yes.
Would lengthening hours have an impact on budget?
Oh, yes.
Absolutely. Um, okay, all right, anything else from personnel?
Fine, you can come up with numbers. Try harder.
Do you have any new business? Don't think so. Any correspondence?
Uh, we did get, uh, none, none over email, but we did get a Christmas card from M C D or a holiday card.
Clever drawings, too.
Um, I have received, uh, some additional correspondence, uh, from patrons concerning, uh, programming. And so Crystal and I are working to set up a, a meeting time, uh, with those individuals and I expect to meet with them hopefully by the end of next week.
Did you get that directly? Is that how it came?
Yes, I did.
Okay, curious. I had to think about that. Yes, I did. Okay.
All right, um, that will bring us to public comments. So we do have a member of the public with us today. And so, sir, I would like to turn the floor over to you. Um, if you would tell us your name and, uh, which, which city you live in, Parvatin or Parvatin Hill, then the floor is yours for three minutes.
First, a happy holiday to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me to talk. Uh, there are two subjects I want to brought to attention. One is education. Education is so important. They say if you open one school, you close one prison. And I noticed that, um, if you need my help, I am MBA, post-MBA, I can help the, be efficient. Uh, how you're closing, the closing the holiday, the best time for people, if the library is after hour, we are not working, weekend, holiday. And unfortunately, that is looks, they are, the best time they are closing the library is that the best good manager is to eliminate, cut down the, close it first. But their work efficiency is very important. I can look, if I have time, I can go through the, see what is the cut down the part is costing library a lot of money. And be efficient, so we can open. If we cannot, or not open the whole library, we can open the part of library. And there, uh, like, other thing was, we noticed, they are spending a lot of money in the summer time, people have to go outside to warm up because they are putting air conditioning so high. They're wasting a lot of energy. And, uh, I, I read people sometimes, I mean, myself, I have to go outside, warm up and go. And they put the dial there, uh, in summertime, minus maybe sixty or something. And I brought to attention, it's so cold in the summertime. You cannot stay there, I have two jackets or something. I'm police officer, I can, not my job, my job, I just believe what a volunteer. I am, uh, my job is, uh, I am the system engineer, senior system engineer. But that I became volunteer to go help the school for children. That's what I became, police officer. Why, I am very strong for that weather, but I have to go warm up. Let's cut down the price, place, costing library a lot of money, so we be efficient. We need to, like, I, West Bromfield, my house is in West Bromfield, I live here. An arbor, there are open long-term period of time during the day. We are very short. We are trying to like, uh, limited time we are open the weekend. And a lot of people are observing sometime patrolling. A lot of people coming and they see the library closed and leave. This is the, we need to open library a lot. That's one thing. Run. If you need my help, I am going through a lot of problems. I try to help you come, help you. My point is not criticize. I want to improve the community. I love this community. I want to help it. Criticize it. Second is the job. I am senior. Um, I am seventy-three. I don't like to say seventy-three. But it is because I take care of my body. But it is in the other language, I speak, uh, three languages simultaneously, I know five language. None other language, they say, how old are you? They say, what's your age? Recently, one person, I don't want to bring her name, starting emphasizing the word old people, older people, older people, older. That's a very negative word. Old is not the, uh, scientifically speaking, every six, seven to end, end year, all of the cell of your body rejuvenated. So brain, some heart live longer, but every seven to ten years completely change. So life person that doesn't get older, it get mature. I wish I have all of this wisdom when it was teenager. And the person they are trying to emphasize is true, is true typing. That's not very negative. Older people, if you are more than sixty-five years old, you can attend or something. It is other people, you cannot, you don't have to say older, older. Maybe there are a lot of better word to use. We are going forward. That's a negative word. Let, let's, let's not go be, move forward, not backward. One very metaphor for that, when you're going forward, your car, you have a big front screen. When you're going back, you don't want to go back, you look at the mirror so small. Let us go backward. Let's not be negative. Let's be positive. You need my help, I will help it. I don't have time, but I make time to come help you. If you need my expertise, I am as twice before come to this country was president of two company. PepsiCo factory and the silo of state of Azerbaijan. Because of prosecution, I came here, but I did good here too. I have a lot of expertise. I have a knowledge. I can help you. Let's help you. So I just want to, two things for that, make extra time. People come disappointed. When I go after, I am patrolling sometime, the library, I see the, so many people come. After hour, they see the clothes and they leave. Because that's the time we can use the library and they are closed. I am so, thank you for taking your time. I know it is that. I am not, noticed that timing, that this holiday is so important. One of my veteran friend come, come to me, he said they are want to honor me to serve this country. I want go to library, it's closed. What kind of honor is it? They close their, their veteran, they, they close two, one holiday, they hope close whole weekend. That is, that one thing, well, maybe will help you, uh, library is like a supermarket. Supermarket is food for body. Library is food for brain. I have twelve, uh, graduation office, I document, I don't want to brag about that. But if you want to get your brain, you go to library and should be open like supermarket hour, not like a regular office. Because a good time we are using library is the holiday and it is closed. So we have to do other unhealthy habit. Twenty-one days is very important. If you got twenty-one days to go to library, you get used to it. Thank you. But just two things, library hours and all the, all negative words. I will appreciate if you look at this two, two subject. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you for the feedback.
What, what, um, description would you prefer instead of an old person?
You can choose maturity.
Sure.
Age at least, not old. Old is a negative, if it to your life person, you don't get older. You get mature, you get more age.
You would prefer like a age range?
Yeah, like I said, I've been, I noticed I say, uh, like a sixty-five or better. You don't have six, sixty-five and older. Or you can say, you don't have to emphasize the negative word. So I have another expertise. I have, I wish all of this knowledge, version knowledge. Another thing I share with you. I love, I, I didn't, this is too late, but anyway, so if you need my help, I will be here. But if you just, uh, I, I thank you so much for each of you. You do, yes, for the experience, but thank you, each of you.
Thank you.
I can, I can, I look at the list of subjects. I appreciate. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Um, do we have any trustee comment?
I have a question.
Uh, oh, if we're still in public, let's move to public comment first.
I just want to think.
I just wanna thank you for keeping the DBA stance from as it is right now. And continue to, you know, I mean, yes, we should continue to look at in case of problems, but hard economic times, but it is money lost.
Thank you, appreciate that. And we appreciate the, I think, interface that you guys maintain with DPA as well. All right, I'm gonna give a trustee comment, share.
Question is, how are the pickup boxes doing?
Good question.
Are they being used?
Lockers.
Is anyone dropping their?
Answer that question?
I'm sorry.
How are they being, are there, are there people who put in their box?
They're not returning books in there, is that what you're saying?
No, I mean. Are they using the box?
Yes, they are.
Is there gonna be a little report on using after a few months to see if it was worth the money?
Yes. We don't have that with data right now, but it's increasing. I can get to that, yes.
I'll help, I'll help increase the data because I'm using it.
That's three times, sorry.
Right?
But, and so let's, just a, a super interesting comment, I guess I'll give my comment now. Um, you know, some of the comments that we heard from the public, uh, those are interesting comments. Uh, because we constantly battle that, even though we're open more hours than most of our neighboring libraries, people still want more hours. Um, Kelly has got an idea you talked about before, um, about, you know, ways that, that we can do just what he described. Open up a portion of the library for limited services and I think as we're in this master planning season. Now's the time to think about the infrastructure necessary to do that, um, because.
Have to retrofit the library to be able to close spaces off.
Yeah, and so if we're gonna pursue something like that and thinking about the future, now would be the time to do it. So that, um, that feedback was kind of timely. Um, and I think you have some designs on solutions to that. And one of the first designs on that is the lockers, cause that does help us extend our availability. Um, and so maybe we need to do more to promote some of that as well. Um, beyond that, I do wanna encourage everyone to uh, attend our MLK Day activities. Um, every year we always have um, lots of great activities around MLK Day. Uh, but the staff, I think, has outdone themselves this year with a three day celebration. With a lot of different types of activities for different types of people to plug into what works for them. So I really do um, appreciate that. And then thirdly, I do wanna just acknowledge uh, the passing of President Carter, uh, and that today is a national day of mourning. Um, and I think um, as a society, the values that President Carter demonstrated. Um, are values that I think would serve us all well into the future and uh, pray for his family. And for the nation, uh, that we can kind of continue to maybe follow in a little bit of his example, so.
Ernie, there's a wonderful book the library has on Carter called The Outlier. And we have it here and that is a wonderful book, of how he was the outlier, he was outside everybody else and it's a very, not a good read. Yes, we carry a couple of copies.
Thank you for that. I've not read that and I'll put that on my list. I might get it tonight if I have time, um, here in our evening service hours. Um, any other trustee comments? Chris?
Uh, I have two. First of all, I wanna really appreciate um, Kelly and Maria for your support. For the warm welcome to the library. Um, was the first time we, we had done it as the outs lodge. It was not quite as envisioned, but Maria really put in a lot, lot of time. Brief eat the contribution of the um, refreshments for the families that did come in and I'd like to do it again, but um. Having learned some lessons. Yeah, we can talk about it. Um, but anyway, really thank you for that. And then secondly, um, I asked this body if anybody was willing to serve as a judge for that outs scholarships. Several of you did. I just wanna appreciate you individually, but also just to appreciate this partnership. That is a member of the outs and a member of the board that I could bring that here, so thank you all. We have fifteen scholarship applications this year. We'll know if we have any national awardees. Uh, in April, in addition to that, we'll be awarding two two thousand dollar scholarships. Uh, academic scholarships and three six hundred dollar post-secondary non-academic scholarships. So I'll keep you guys posted on how our students in farming to do.
That's awesome. Thank you, Chris. Uh, I appreciated the opportunity to read through those essays. That's always. Inspiring to read um, works of young people who don't have the drive of life that we do. Uh, so I really appreciated the opportunity.
And none, and none of the essays are coached. These are not like, you know, college admission essays where they're all getting coaches. You know, they're just essays they have to write. So they go online and they are timed, they only have a certain amount of time to write. So they have to be prepared before they get online and then they do it and you can kind of tell.
Yeah, you can tell.
All right, Stephen. Yeah, just a point of information in terms of the structure of the board agenda, have there ever been a time? Uh, that anyone can recall in this board's operation where there's been public comment towards the front of the meeting? Or several public comment, like a public comment front and the end, has that been a thing that has happened?
We have done.
Yes, it is.
They do that once in a while. I made a comment years ago and they were gonna have a, a survey of the board and they said, why don't you do the comments before we start?
Yeah, um, and, and so Jim, maybe you might want to speak too. I think when I joined the board, that might have been the case. We had two instances of public comment. I think our last president might have eliminated one and we kind of kept there, so, but we did have two public comments.
No, no, it's. Why wasn't, that's right. Yeah, we have, as are nice. Yeah, we, we have had um, multiple iterations of the agenda. Public comment at the beginning, at the end, both. Um, uh, we can talk about, I, I know why you're asking, but um, it's uh. It, it helps the, it helps, it doesn't help if the, you know, people feel like they're locked out of making a comment if it's at the beginning. You know, it's, we've just, we've tried to balance all those concerns.
Um, I've even, in some instances, when we've had extremely long agendas, I've gone to the person uh, who visited to see. If they intended uh, or could wait through the entire meeting or if they would prefer to make their comment upfront. And then we made that adjustment to the agenda, so we're open to it for sure. And we have done that in the past.
Which is, I, I mentioned, I saw him. I'm certain he's well educated on the robust happenings of, of this evening's meeting. Uh, in, in my day job at Open Schools, I interface with our board fairly regularly. Our standard practice is to have public comment at the front so that families who want to say something to the board. Um, and it's up to the board president's discretion to directly respond to those comments or not. Uh, but we do tend to put one at the front so that families can say their piece. Um, and potentially, uh, depending upon the items on the agenda that night, influence our decision. Which I say for the public, but then also providing that opportunity at the end for someone who might have to work and comes late. So the, the multiple opportunities for, um, is something I've seen to practice.
And so Kelly, maybe we can, I know Crystal, you're listening, if we can uh, update that going forward. And it's a period at the start of the meeting and one at the close. Now, that I think we might discuss um, a little bit further about online. Uh, I don't know.
Actually, the person you're observing.
Yeah, so that, that did happen during, during, during COVID, yeah, yes. But there was authority by the legislature that. All open meetings, yeah.
And that expired.
Yeah, yeah. But I think we are in good stead to add a public comment opportunity at the start of the meeting. Uh, Stephen's point, you know, we don't ever want a person to feel. Um, kind of uh, disenfranchised from the opportunity to communicate with the board, so I appreciate that suggestion. Any other trustee comments? All right, seeing none, I wanna thank you all very much for a productive January meeting. We may consider ourselves adjourned. Tonight.